Good evening. And welcome, everyone, to the October 19th. Let me check that. That would be the November 2nd.
Yeah.
A meeting of the Yarmouth Planning Board. I'm Joanne Crowley, the Chair. And since this is a hybrid meeting involving both in-person and remote participants, I'll read the following statement into the record. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, in pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain states' state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, November 2, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28. This public is welcome to attend by remote access that is provided on the meeting agenda posted on the town website. I will begin by taking roll call. Brad Goodwin.
Present.
Susan Burda.
Here.
Will Rubenstein.
Here.
Chris Vincent.
Here.
Jim Saban.
Present.
Joanne Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum present, I will now call the meeting to order. For remote public participation during the public comment period for this public hearing and public meeting, or at my discretion during the public media, I will invite the audience to comment. Online audience members can use the raise hand button to notify me. Dial-in audience members should press *9 on their phones. All audience members will be muted until you are recognized by me to participate. Once recognized, audience members are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation for the public record. I would now ask you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda this evening is a review of our seasonal employee housing and short-term rentals. This zoning amendment was presented at our annual town meeting. There were two articles that were passed related to these two issues. At the time these amendments were proposed, the Planning Board indicated that we would like to have a meeting in the fall to review how these amendments fared for our 2022 summer season. In addition to the discussions with some motel owners, prop town staff, consisting of police, fire, health, and building departments, they convened together information for discussion with the Planning Board this evening. I would like to begin with a review of our experience of the seasonal housing and then follow with short-term rentals. And I'd like to turn it over to Kathy Williams, who has provided to Planning Board members a summary of our discussions and review for tonight. After Kathy, I would like to invite members of the town, employees who were directly involved in participating, in helping this zoning amendment work. And then I would ask for hotel, motel, and other business owners to join us in their comments. This is meant to inform us and help us better understand how this change was for the good or not. We're hoping it was for the good. And then finally, we will take any public comment that anyone in the audience would like to share with us. So let's start with Kathy Williams, our town planner.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for attending. I think many of you may remember that this amendment at Annual Town Meeting was kind of a collaboration between the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce and the Planning Board. It was really meant to address the issues that we have with seasonal workers' housing, specifically J-1 and H-2B visa workers, which we all know we need for our tourism economy. So the main modification to the article, there's an existing section already in the zoning bylaw, and the amendment actually really only made one significant change, and that was to modify the pool of seasonal employees who can stay in the designated 15% of hotel motel rooms from just the employees of the hotel or motel to employees from other Yarmouth businesses. Other provisions remain the same, including needing an onsite proctor, needing access to cooking facilities, limiting it to April 1st to October 31st, and having either an annual permit issued by the building department or the building commissioner, or a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals if all of the provisions can't be met. The one thing that came out of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting amendments, by expanding the seasonal housing to employees of other Yarmouth businesses, along with the existing ability to get a special permit if you can't meet all of the provisions, it prompted some requests for 100% of seasonal employee housing at some motels, which we'll discuss further this evening. So one of the first hotels, motels that really has done this is the Town and Country, Joe Marama. And they've been housing their seasonal water park workers there for several years, even before and after the pandemic. And they did receive an annual permit issued from the building department for 18 of their 150 licensed motel rooms. They also did receive a certificate for rental for 66 rental units with three per room from the Board of Health. This particular year, they included seasonal employees beyond just the water park. They had other Yarmouth businesses, including Dunkin' Donuts, Shaw's, and the Pancake Man staying there. The police did receive four noise complaints during the summer. Four were due to basically loud parties, two were in June and two were in September, along with two medical and two fire alarms. It's really hard to tell whether the medical or the fire came from guests or were employee-related. But the property owner, when they got the complaints in June, they did implement a bonus program in July, which was to help ensure good behavior from the employees. And he, when I spoke with Joe, he was not really aware of the police calls in September, and he thought that might have been coming from another one of the J-1 students who was there because they have a security guard, but he had already left for the season at that time. So some of the specific provisions that they have in place for this use is they have an onsite proctor manager. They have that private security from 10:00 PM to 4:00 AM daily. They have four kitchens for use by the seasonal employees. And again, they have that bonus program where the raises go up every two weeks, and the bonus is actually given at the end of the season to really encourage good behavior during the entire season. And it really has a limited season because most of the J-1 students are gone by September 12th or September 11th. The second motel that utilized this section of the bylaw this past summer was the Parker's River Resort at 759 Route 28. And they did receive a Zoning Board of Appeals decision for valid for one calendar year to allow for up to 100% of their 24 available rooms to be used for seasonal housing. And it was all done for one employer, EOS Hospitality or the Red Jacket. And meals were provided at the Red Jacket, so they didn't need to worry about meals being provided at the Parker's River Resort. No one spoke in opposition at the ZBA hearing, and the ZBA specifically noted the current housing crisis for temporary employees when they made their decision. The police received no calls all summer long to this establishment. There was one medical and one fire alarm call from the fire department. Some specific provisions that they have in place, and I do know that the owner is here this evening, included a bilingual full-time onsite manager to make sure the communications were maintained, a full-time onsite owner's manager, there was weekly room inspections, they had shuttle buses for the employment, along with bikes and bikes racks for people to get around, which really decreases actually traffic in this particular situation. They did close the pool down, so the pool was not open. As I mentioned before, all the meals were provided by the employer, but they also had picnic tables and grills out for the seasonal employees to utilize. The third motel that used it was the Sunbird Motel, which is the old Thunderbird, and that's at 216 Route 28. They had a relatively small number. They had gotten a permit from the building commissioner for eight of their 96 rooms to be used. The police received no calls to this property, and there were two medical and one fire alarm. But again, we don't know. It's most likely guest-related due to the small number of seasonal employee housing being used there. There is, because of the provision that I mentioned, there is a ZBA application pending right now for the Village Green Motel, which is at 33 and 37 Seaside Village Road. And they have applied for 100% seasonal employee housing for their 55 rooms, and that is currently scheduled for the November 10 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. It is my understanding that it's going to be a similar situation at the Parker's River Resort, where the meals would be provided by the employer. 100% of the rooms would go to that single employer, and it would be within either walking distance of the employer, or there would be shuttle buses to take people around. There were some opposition letters that are in the Zoning Board of Appeals file right now, but that's something that's going to be dealt with through the Zoning Board of Appeals. One of the things I think that we all want, we all want to see these things be successful, and it might be beneficial for the applicant to, you know, outline to the Zoning Board of Appeals all the different protocols that they'll have in place in order to mitigate the concerns that have been expressed by the neighbors, and ensure that they will be good neighbors. And they could, you know, provide further information on the onsite proctor. What is the code of conduct required by people staying there? And what are the procedures for removing an employee that's not in compliance? Who do the neighbors call if there's an issue, and how do they get in touch with someone? And then, you know, are there smaller, you know, improvements or maintenance items that could be readily implemented that will help make this a good use in a relatively residential neighborhood? So that's going to be something that's going to be discussed at the Zoning Board of Appeals on November 10. And that's all I have on seasonal employee housing.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite any members of town staff. I see our new Chief of Police is here. Welcome, Chief Lennon. Members of the fire department are here, and others. And I'd welcome any comments that any of you would like to make to the public or to the Planning Board with regard to this, these amendments. Chief?
Good evening. I think Kathy's going to cover what I was going to ask at the November meeting, because I, just some of the questions that came to mind is, you know, is there a code of conduct for the employees that are going to be staying there? And then what is our recourse if we start having problems? I want to go back to, you know, my younger days in the 2000s when we had a lot of workers coming in, and we would have 30 people sharing a cottage, and they're working shifts, and we would go there for noisy parties. So, you know, to protect the neighborhoods that these are in, and we all know that we need this housing, but what do we do if we start having problems? You know, what's the recourse, you know, for the employer? And who are they going to call? They're going to call the police department, Kathy. And then we're going to have to know, you know, what we can do in addition to just going down and calling the noisy people. If we start getting repeat offenses, then where do we take it? Do we go to the health department? Do we go to Kathy? Who do we talk to so that we can target the individuals, identify them to the business owners, and let them know that we're having problems with them? And then what do we do with them? Because if they're J-1s, they're over here, they need a place to stay. So then what do we do if we're having an issue with somebody? So those are some of the questions that I would be interested in getting answers to so that we can notify our staff. This is what we do if this is what happens. And to Kathy's point, we did discuss it. We did not get a lot of, we did not receive a lot of complaints over this past summer. We did receive a few. The Town and Country did have a security guard there, which I'm sure took care of the majority of the issues, and when that person couldn't handle it, that's when they called us. So that would be something that I would hope that the other businesses that are going to be fairly full would look to do the same, so that they would have somebody on staff who would be in a position of authority to keep everybody in check, and then if they can't handle it, they would call us. But I'm interested to see what comes out of the November 10 meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think those kind of protocols are best defined and have been enforced seemingly well this summer by the employers, primarily due to the notion that the employee could be dismissed if the code of conduct as required by the employer and the motel owner is not properly enforced. So we're hoping that there won't be any large problems, but I think your suggestion to have some sense of a protocol that each of the employers and the motels have would be a good one, as a form of guidance for you and your officers.
And then is there a limit to how many people can be to a room? I didn't see that when I was reading through this.
The health department would need to do inspections and would identify the maximum number.
Okay, excellent. That's all I have.
Oh, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I see we have representatives from the fire department.
We're here for the answer any questions that might come up.
Okay.
Health Department.
Other members from the, any other town employees?
Health Department in the back, if they have any comments.
Oh, Bruce? Yes, of course.
No, we're fine. We're here for any questions. We worked with the motels this summer, all motels in town, if there were questions came up, or whether it was overcrowding or trash or anything, so we work with them closely. So any questions come up, we'll be here. The questions of square footage, they are different between a motel and a rental, so we would look at the difference, but most of them were just two to three to a room, which would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Mary. Welcome.
So hi, Mary Wagon. I work for the Town of Yarmouth as the Affordable Housing Program Administrator, and I just want to congratulate the Town of Yarmouth for taking this chance this past season. And what I can say is, this gives a small bit of relief to our local residents. When you're looking for a place to stay, and you unfortunately are doing that during the summer season, you're really competing against the seasonal workers. And so, in a way, this actually promotes year-round housing, right? Because some of these potential year-round units are not being used by J-1. So I think it's, in a roundabout way, it actually helps the people that I'm trying to help to find year-round housing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other members of town staff who would like to share their views or experiences from this past summer? Okay, I'd like to welcome and invite any of the motel or hotel owners who'd like to speak on this. I see some are here. Don't be shy. Now I'd like to, if, sure. Thank you. They're such a shy group.
Patrick Demko, Parker's River. Want to thank the board for having this meeting, discussion. I spoke with Kathy a couple of weeks prior to this meeting, and she asked me a few questions in regards to how we were successful with this. Well, we partnered with a great group, EOS, which is doing business as Red Jacket Resort. They, to answer, Captain Lennon, correct, congratulations, by the way. One of the things that EOS puts, one of the things that EOS puts in is a no tolerance. They do not play around. If you have one infraction, you're back to where you came from. And that really worked for us. Also, we provided a bilingual onsite proctor, an onsite full-time manager, which performs security in the evenings. I was not aware of any of the, I think it was mentioned, you mentioned that we had one fire call. I was not aware of that. Are you sure it's 759?
One medical and one fire alarm.
It, medical?
We responded there for a fire alarm.
Oh, okay, all right.
I can't give you any details.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I'll have to look into that because it was not brought to my attention. It was successful because we did everything by the book. We, one of the things that we provided, well, EOS provided, was the shuttle service, which we all know what the traffic on 28 is like, and this cut down on the traffic. I mean, we would see so many accidents either coming out of Kia or coming out of our parking lot during a regular season. And by having the shuttle service there, you know, I think we had a total maybe of four cars for the season in there, and that's with 100% of our rooms. We only have 24 rooms, so that was another thing. And the maximum occupancy that we did was two per room. I know that we could do three, but we just figured the best thing to do is just keep it at two people occupancy. I don't know what else I can say, except for EOS is a great partner. And I think that if we continue with this program, I think the future of tourism here is going to be prosperous, you know? And that's it. I want to thank the town. I want to thank the building department, the Board of Health, everybody, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and to keep this thing going. I think it'll really, really change, you know, what we really are here for, tourism. I mean, we started to see it disappear for a while, and now that COVID is, you know, somewhat over, somewhat, people want to get out. And in order to get out, they've got to have, you know, someplace closer to go. And I can't imagine, if you don't have employees to take care of housekeeping, how are you going to, if you go out and you're a family of four and you're going to spend a week on the Cape, you're going to spend $4,000 or $5,000. And if all of a sudden you come back from the beach and your room's not cleaned because they don't have staff to clean the rooms. So all of this is really working, and I think you folks are doing a great job, and I hope we can continue it, okay? Because I've got a two-year lease with EOS. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Demko. We appreciate that.
I do think one thing to note is that it is an annual permit. They were issued a one-year permit, so they need to keep coming back. So I think if, for some reason, there is a situation in one particular place where you're having chronic issues over and over again, that might impact how the ZBA feels about issuing you your special permit the following year. So this all working out at every individual motel helps all of us. So I think it's working together to make sure that it's successful for everybody.
Any other, any other business owners? Yes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vier.
Good evening. I'm Chairman, members of the board, Jamie Vier for the Davenport Companies. As you mentioned at the beginning, this bylaw change was in part, I'll call it a collaboration between folks at the chambers through the community partnership and the planning department to see if this could be beneficial to Yarmouth. And so first, I want to thank you for supporting it. Thank the townsfolk for supporting it at town meeting. Thank the business owners here who implemented it to get it work. And then thank you for having this forum again, so that we can see how, in fact, it worked, and it seems like it was very positive. So we're hopeful that this is a first step in helping to solve the problem that we all know exists and requires solutions not unlike this one to benefit all of us in this. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for all the work that was done here, and to the business owners, because if you remember back in the spring, part of the argument was the self-policing would be if your employee stayed at a particular resort and had a bad episode and could be shipped out, well, you just heard, that's exactly what one employer did. Zero tolerance. One strike, you're out. And so it did, in fact, self-police, which is good to hear. So again, thank you very much for that, and we're hoping that this is a good first step towards a problem that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vier. I was remiss in not thanking the community partnership for initiating this and working collaboratively with the planning staff and our building department staff to make this happen. It was, in my long term here as a Planning Board member, a perfect example of how a group can come together, focus on an issue, and bring a really positive result that the town can accept, and that the business owners can accept, and that our guests especially can accept. So I appreciate that, Mr. Vier. Thank you for your time. Last spring, you spent quite a bit of time on this with your team and the community partnership, and we thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the business community? Anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Yes?
Vita Morris. I wonder if anybody has any statistics about what number of people that were taken care of by these very good experiences by these motels constitute the percentage of the total, the total seasonal employees that were here in town?
That's a good, the total number of employees who were housed through this program. What do you think?
I think you might have ended up with close to 200 at the Town and Country, and then 50, almost 50 at the Parker's River Resort, and then probably, you know, maybe 20 people at the Sunbird. I don't know whether Jamie has any information on the number of seasonal employees that we need to house. I know that most seasonal employees have two jobs, so they're not just serving one business, they're serving multiple businesses.
What I was asking is, actually, do we have any idea how many total seasonal employees do we have floating around in town during the season?
So that we'll know.
We do have some estimates. I think Mr. Vier might be able to help us with that, Ms. Morris. Yeah, that's a good question. Thank you.
I don't like the term, but I'm going to use it. Pre-COVID, there was approximately 420 J-1 H-2B workers, the data showed us, in Yarmouth that needed housing. That was the number that was utilized pre-COVID. As we know, that number diminished when the program was suspended, and then the program was reinstituted again last year, but at reduced numbers. So the best data we have presently is 420 J-1 H-2B workers were the numbers that were tracked several years ago.
And from what we just did, the quick math, around 270 of them, approximately, may have taken advantage of this housing arrangement this summer.
That's right. But 420 weren't even eligible to get here.
Right, yeah, the number was diminished from that.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other, any other public questions or comments? Questions from the, from the, we have a remote participant. Mary Jane Tucci, welcome.
She's muted.
Mary Jane, you're muted.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I'd be there tonight, but I'm homesick with my latest COVID vaccine, so. I live near the Cape Cod Family Resort on 28. I don't live on 28, but I live near them, and it's been a mess. It was a mess all summer. The police were there many times. There were rowdy parties, the laughter, the loud voices that spill onto 28 and Abel's Road. It was just a mess there, and it's been a mess every summer since I've lived in my neighborhood. Certainly, if I had family coming here, I would never tell them to stay at the Cape Cod Family Resort. It isn't for families, it's for rowdy partiers. It's terrible. I don't know if you folks are aware of the problems that were there these past few summers? I don't know.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Our town planner, Kathy Williams, has a question, Mary Jane?
Was this, at the motel, actually at the Cape Cod Family Resort? Or the Town and Country is a few doors down, and it's a different motel? So are you expressing concerns about the motel that's right there where the water park is?
Yes, correct. Because I just drove through there today, again, just to make sure I was talking about the right place. Yes, correct. And it's particularly the section that abuts Abel's Road. It's that part of the motel there. I mean, maybe it's going on in another part. You know, when you drive through there, it's long, it's a little windy in there, but it's particularly the part that abuts Abel's Road. It's a mess in there.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your comments, Mary Jane.
Thank you for your.
Anything else? Is there anyone else?
Nope.
No?
Not with their hand raised.
All right. I guess we'll make a note of that, Kathy. I'm not sure.
I can certainly talk to Joe Marama.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, you've got a connection back with him. And let him know we did receive that comment at the hearing. And now I'd like to open it up to members of the Planning Board for questions or statements or concerns. Can we start with Mr. Goodwin?
Sure, I was just making notes. It seems like Ms. Tucci's comment was probably, I'm guessing, those would be guests staying at the resort, not employees, since the employees were housed down the road closer to Higgins Crawl than in the resort, correct?
It sounds that way, but Kathy's going to pursue it with the hotel owner.
Okay.
Yes.
No, I was pleasantly surprised to read the comments when I picked up my packet on Saturday. I was holding my breath when I turned the pages, and I was really grateful that the town worked well with the employees, with the employers, and the employers and the employees had a win-win situation. So knock on Formica, knock on wood, we keep going with this. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Saban?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Thanks, Madam Chair. It sounds like it worked. I mean, that's the good news. But since we planned ahead to have this meeting, which I'm glad we did, I guess I'd sort of like to lob out there the old, you know, what would you have done differently question? Because it feels like that's part of the conversation here, and I think Chief Lennon sort of indicated some of that. So if there's anybody that has suggestions... sort of indicated some of that. So if there's anybody that has suggestions, even though it's already passed the town meeting, in terms of the enforcement and some of the smaller details, this is the opportunity to say, hey, gosh, now that we've lived through one of these seasons with this new bylaw, here's something to think about as we start planning ahead for summer 2023. So it's more of a, well, it's not rhetorical, it's more of a question back out to everybody else. If there anything that we should be gathering and thinking about now that it's only November, I say only because here we are. So other than that, if nobody has any ideas about what they would have done differently or what they would like to try either more of or less of in summer 2023, I'm very pleased with how it went. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would ask that, since this is being recorded, and members of the public may watch this later, please send any comments that you might have to our town planner, Kathy Williams, with regard to your experiences this summer.
And Madam Chair, if I may, maybe if, in the course of this, the rest of this part of tonight's meeting, even if you don't think about something right now, but you think about it while we're still up here chatting, please share it with us.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Will. Mr. Vincent?
I don't have any comments at this time.
Ms. Berta?
Just two comments. This is going along with the law of unintended consequences. If this program, and it looks like it has worked well, it will be popular, maybe other motels will ask for the 100% waiver, and we'll have a thriving employee population. Unintended consequences, you may be overwhelmed if this becomes a very, very popular. You mentioned capacity, and I think that's something that we should be aware of. The second thing long term is I would not want to see Yarmouth become the rental capital of the Cape, the summer rental capital of the Cape, because it is a popular program. It seems to have worked well. So long term, I think we have to, I think we have to have these meetings every year to make sure that we're not turning all of our motels over to summer rentals for kids. I don't think that would be good long for the tourism. I don't think it'd be good, I don't, long term, I don't think it'd be good for the town. Otherwise, I think it's certainly off in the right direction. It seems to have worked well. As it becomes more popular, I don't want to see the police department overwhelmed with complaints, none, virtually none this year. But that could change as more and more motels, you know, come online and take advantage of the program. Those are just two observations.
Thank you.
Can I just add one other quick thing?
Yes, you may.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out that one of the things we talked about in the spring that was a concern had to do with enforcement from different departments and how that was going to get handled. And I just wanted to take note that it says here that a second full-time housing inspector which was approved at town meeting has been filled. So I know that doesn't necessarily solve all problems in all departments, but it feels like also another piece of this puzzle that I think we were all legitimately concerned about from all sides. So that is also positive news. Thank you for letting me add that back in.
A good point. Any other comments from the board or the public? Well, thank you all for coming. We really appreciate. Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Neets?
Yes, thank you. I just had a question about the rooms tax. Is that still applicable in these cases as the motels go strictly to employees?
It is, because they need to be a motel in order to even be eligible for this program.
For the town's not losing rooms tax revenue.
I specifically spoke to Patrick and Joe Maramo, and they're both paying their excise tax for motels.
Great, thank you.
Next, on the review of the annual town meeting amendments, were the zoning changes we made for short-term rentals. And again, I'd like Kathy to run through just a brief summary of that, and we'll run through the same kind of order if we have public comment. And then we'll take some questions and comments from the board. Kathy?
So this amendment in the annual town meeting was really just to codify the use of short-term rentals. We all have vacation rentals on Cape Cod. It's kind of a bit of a tradition. But we also wanted to be sure that we were incorporating some general provisions to really balance maintaining the residential character of our neighborhoods while still allowing for short-term rentals, which bring in quite a bit of short-term rental tax to the town, over $1.6 million, I believe, last year, with 75% of it being allocated, being directed to our wastewater program. So that's something that's very, very important. So some of the provisions we had were related to trash removal, where you can park, and I think the big one was the type of rentals and making sure that it stays in residential in nature. So no large weddings, no big family reunions or giant get-togethers. There is also a sunset clause on this particular short-term rental amendment of November 13, 2024, to kind of give us an idea of a little bit longer planning process to see whether we do have any identifiable issues that we would have to go back to town meeting and maybe amend, and/or if everything's going great, we would just take out the sunset clause and continue doing what we're doing. So we did have the staff meeting with the different departments, and the health department kind of noted nothing unusual this past season regarding short-term rentals, indicating that they still received most of their complaints about trash and overcrowding. So that continues to be a potential issue here in town. And they're also continuing to work to have all the rental units registered through tracking and monitoring of the rentals. The building department received mostly noise complaints related to short-term rentals with one parking complaint. They did receive two tent permit applications for large events at short-term rentals, which were denied. So that's, we didn't have a lot of those, but we did have a couple that was cut off at the tent permit phase. The police and fire databases, they don't get down to the nitty-gritty of whether it's a homeowner or rental or a short-term rental, so we don't have any real data from them on short-term rentals. Different information and procedures that we've enacted. To provide more information to the public, the health department website has been updated. They've expanded their frequently asked questions. We've also included the link there to the short-term rental zoning bylaws. So when people go there, they can click on that and know the provisions that they have to live by. They also provided links to the mass rental tax registration, so people know that you also need to register with the state, and also information from the Attorney General's Guide to landlord and tenant rights and responsibilities, just to make sure everybody knows the rules, so to speak. And they're also continuing their practice of including information on rental registrations within the water bills and also mailing out information to those who registered in the previous year. The new permitting software program, that hasn't quite been implemented yet, but I think soon, will differentiate between the seasonal and short-term rentals, although they do need to modify the paper copy to do that. So we can better track whether something's a multi-month seasonal rental or whether it would qualify as a short-term rental. And as Will noted, we did have a second full-time housing inspector position approved at the 2022 annual town meeting, and that position has been filled. So it can help with some of those inspections and enforcement issues that have come up in the past.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. On short-term rentals, any particular comments from members of town staff or the public? Yes?
My name is Dan Burns. I live on Old Main Street. With the, some of the information in your zoning, you've got one, couple of areas that I think we should reconsider, or you should reconsider, not we. The 1 to 31-day provision, there's some short-term rental capabilities, if you will, like with hospital staff and that type of thing, where they come in for the summer or even for the winter for a couple of months. And if you have a short-term rental, it's pretty simple and easy to use that for the nurses or doctors or something along those lines. And limiting it to just 31 days, when the doctor or nurse desires to be there for three months is, I don't want, you know, you don't want to be breaking the law, but there ought to be a provision or something allowed in there.
Sure, please.
I think what you're talking about is a seasonal rental, which is allowed. This is a short-term rental, meets the definition of the state for short-term rental, which is the 31 days. And these are the type of rentals that we can receive the excise tax on. If someone wanted to rent for three months, they wouldn't be a short-term rental, they'd be a seasonal rental, and that's a different box that they check. So they can still do that. They wouldn't be in violation.
Well, but when you have short-term rentals and you've made the decision to rent one of your units, if you will, to a doctor, for example, who's here to fill in for the summer in the hospital for three months rather than one month, still getting the excise tax for all the time that's going in there.
I do not believe you are, sir. I believe it's only for rentals, a maximum of 31 days. So if you're renting for more than 31 days, you are not considered a short-term rental and not required to pay the short-term rental tax.
Yeah, but we are. Just, I mean, we go through Airbnb, and they pay it directly to the state and to the town.
That's Airbnb.
Yeah.
They have choice to charge that.
This bylaw isn't limiting you from doing what you're saying you want to do, which is rent for three months to a doctor or a visiting nurse. You can do that without having to pay the short-term rental or even applying under this section. You can rent your home in a single-family neighborhood.
I understand that, but your zoning, your law here is for short-term rentals, which we fall under, our short-term rentals fall under, says we can't. That's why I'm saying there should be a modification of something to allow. Going, when you go through Airbnb, they do all of the financials. Everything is done by them. They pay the state, they pay the town. Whether it's three days or 60 days, they pay based on a nightly rental.
I think that's some particular situation with Airbnb and the state tax. I don't think that has anything to do with our particular zoning bylaw.
So it's okay, is what you're saying, to rent for more than 31 days.
Yeah, I mean, it's a state, it's a state, we needed to, we needed to, for this particular amendment on short-term rentals, it was, it was kind of a, let me say that, the word "short-term rentals" did not appear in our zoning bylaws. And when language is absent in zoning bylaws, it's prohibited.
Well, that's a...
So this is, this is legal mumbo jumbo, but it is prohibited. So therefore, we knew that we were at risk for not having it defined, short-term rental, defined and in our bylaw as described by Massachusetts general law. So that's what we did. Seasonal is totally separate, rent your house year-round is totally separate. Where taxes come in, local taxes, state taxes, those are all governed by the length of the rental. Short-term rentals have a specific excise tax on them that seasonal and long-term rentals do not.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah. So if your tenants are paying an additional tax for something they don't have to, maybe I would suggest you don't use Airbnb and just come and check the box "seasonal" in the building department. Did that explain it, or are we making it just more confusing for you?
No, I'm not confused at all. I'm worried, I'm concerned that when zoning is put in place, and there, I think, no, never mind. When it's put in place, it's in place. And if somebody were to say, okay, well, this guy is renting for more than 31 days, so he's breaking the law, so we're going to close him down.
He's not, he's not.
According to this...
It's not, it's a category.
There's multiple buckets for you to rent your property in the town of Yarmouth. This is just one bucket, and it's the 1 to 31-day bucket. So if you do 32+, it's a different bucket. Am I explaining that right?
Yes.
Okay. I hope that's helpful.
I hope so.
Well, it's not a hope, sir. It is.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Then, I mean, then I just have one more question, and that is in the provision where it says regarding like photo shoots, for example, not allowing photo shoots. I can understand major, you know, events, that type of thing, but for example, we have had four wedding parties, not weddings, but they've stayed at our short-term rentals, and they have used our property, which is extensive, for taking photos. And again, I don't want to have our new chief walk into my property one day and say, oh, you're breaking the law, you're under arrest. So I'm suggesting we maybe codify that somehow, that it is less of a provision.
Kathy, does photo shoots, the way it's written, is that more about a commercial photo shoot, like we're going to take photos of this, of a product, to then sell, and we're going to stage that photo shoot at the house? That is not what we're talking about when you're talking about taking pictures of a bachelorette or groom, you know, a stag party or whatever.
No, 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 that's, no, it's wedding parties.
We're saying, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're saying the same thing, but I don't think that's what this says.
If you're having a wedding somewhere else at a wedding venue in town that's legally allowed to have a wedding venue, and you have your family of six or whatever staying in a short-term rental, and you're having some photos taken in the backyard, that's something that would typically happen in a general, single-family neighborhood. If you had like the entire 50-people wedding party come and want to take a picture, then the neighbors might notice something along those lines. But as long as you're being respectful to your neighbors and you're keeping things more in a residential nature, you're not going to have issues.
Okay. No, I agree with that. But I wonder if it, again, since you're putting it in, you know, making it law, that that should be called out so it's clear as to what's allowed and isn't allowed.
There's no way a law can be written that specific to cover every single thing. So you have to allow for some generalities in there.
Bylaw also says no large-scale events, including but not limited to weddings, corporate events, class, family reunions, and photo shoots.
That's what it says, yes.
Yes, Susan?
Could we consider, not right now, but consider adding the word "commercial"? As Will said, the, I think the entire discussion was not allowing a big production company come to do a commercial.
It does say corporate events in the same sentence, though, Susan, would that help?
It does, okay.
I think between the words "large-scale" and "corporate"...
We've covered it.
But I do understand what the gentleman is saying, that he's obviously a more, he's an Aristotelian and not a follower of Plato. He's a letter-of-the-law guy. So I can understand, right with the chief here, we have to make sure. So I get that, but also I think there's enough wiggle room that what you're describing is going to be okay.
Wonderful. And by the way, thank you. I mean, it is, it's nice to see so many towns around this New England area have just decided that short-term rentals didn't exist and threw them out. And we, I'm happy to see that that didn't happen here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for your comments. Any other comments from members of the board? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Castle?
Ryan Castle, CEO of the Cape Cod and Island Association Realtors. I want to thank you guys. We worked with you guys, the background on this, because we wrote a model bylaw about two and a half years ago on short-term rentals, right? Because most of our members manage short-term rentals, and we want to make sure that as a community in every town, we are rewarding the good actors and penalizing the bad actors, right? We don't want those bad apples to say, come in and be problems to you guys, and then you say, okay, no short-term rentals are allowed and affect the whole industry, right? And so we want to thank you for that, with that. And thank you to Kathy as well, because as y'all were working through, I think exactly the same issue we were bringing up to her about the issue of, I think y'all added the word "large-scale" after we brought back about dinner parties and things like that and photo shoots, right? People come and rent a beach house for the week, and they want a family photo shoot, right? We had those conversations with Kathy at the start of this, and I think that's really important, as the gentleman was saying. So that's where that large-scale and that corporate language that Will was referencing came in, in this discussion. So, you know, we've taken it upon ourselves to say, let's regulate our own members, let's regulate what they do, because we want to make sure that works, right? And so I did want to specify one thing you said, just because this is recorded, so I wanted to push back. We do believe that you should make it explicit in your zoning bylaw, as you're doing, but we do not believe the Linfield decision requires that. We believe the Linfield decision opens it up for interpretation, that some legal counsel, such as the town's legal counsel, may have decided that. I just wanted to clarify that, because I don't think Linfield was a blanket, you have to put it in, you're explicit in your zoning bylaw. And I just want to point that out for the record, since this meeting's recorded on that issue, just to clarify that for everyone as well. And yes, to concern that, it's interesting that the issue may, I'll talk to the man afterwards, because I've actually helped people through submitting their excise tax on short-term rentals, right? And the state wouldn't even collect it. They won't let you put it into their system for a rental that extended over 31 days. So I'm wondering how Airbnb's even doing that. So that's a very interesting thing, because they have an automated system, I know, but they may actually be going around the town. They may have developed a way around it to work directly with partner revenue. But anyways, thank you guys very much. But anyways, thank you guys very much. And please, you know, feel free to use us as a resource. Like you said, we've, you guys, your model, your bylaw mirrors the model bylaw we wrote about two and a half years ago, and we had provided to the town before y'all even started, because we wanted to get ahead of this. And so if there are issues, if there are things, our members are experts in this field. They've worked around in every, they work in every jurisdiction here, and we collaborate nationally with groups on short-term rentals. So we're definitely happy with that. And it can bring some best practices as you move forward with this. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. And since this does have a sunset provision, we will be revisiting it, and we will look forward to talking to you, along with others, to make it as good as it can be, if improvements are needed, of course. Members of the board, any other, or members of the public, anyone else?
There's nobody.
No one, no one online either? Okay. So with that, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. We're looking forward to a good season, starting in May. And I appreciate the time that you spent with us this evening, thank you. We're moving on to the next item on our agenda this evening, which is the public hearing on citizen petition zoning article for the 2022 special town meeting. I would now like to continue the public hearing that began on October nineteenth, 2022. I note that the time is six twenty-five?
Don't look at that clock.
Minus three, six twenty-five. For citizen petition article number twenty-three, under consideration for the Town of Yarmouth Special Town Meeting, to be held on November fifteenth, 2022. Thank you for joining us this evening. For those members of the public who are joining us this evening, I would ask that you sign in for the public record, if you would so, that would be helpful. And I would also like to welcome again Representative of the Petitioners, Mr. Ryan Castle. I think, are you the only one here tonight, Ryan?
I'm here.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to first mention, as well, that the planning board has received additional information this afternoon from the petitioners on the status of their article number twenty-three for the special town meeting. And I'd like to ask you, Ryan, to advise us, Mr. Castle, of any developments since our last meeting? And may I suggest that possibly you read into the record your letter to the planning board, since the public wouldn't have access to it since we just received it this afternoon?
Thank you. And he, Ryan Castle here, on behalf of the petitioner, Sarah Coles, who could not make it here tonight, unfortunately. Both of us balance lives with young kids as well, so, you know. And I'll read this, and then I'll give more context as well. In coordination with the petitioner, we were ready to let you know that the petitioner has cited, in discussions, is in discussions with town moderator about appropriate course of action to postpone the citizen's petition at the special town month, this month's special town meeting. With advice from our legal counsel and the petitioners have considered, we've also considered the viability of introducing amendments on the floor to clean up the technical amendments that we have all talked about there. Given the extent of the technical amendment changes, it would be complicated, even if we, which we were planning to do, is mail out the amendments to town meeting goers before the town meeting. To explain it, it still might be confusing. And with that, we're going to, the petitioner is going to look at postponing the citizen's petition article with the moderator. And that is the, that is the course of action. You know, we believe we would have been able to pass this petition this fall, based on overwhelming support we've heard privately and publicly from Yarmouth residents. But we also want to do what's right for the town as well. We launched, the petitioner and myself and our groups launched this to expand housing opportunities in Yarmouth, to get that conversation started about ADU bylaws, because we overwhelmingly hear daily from our colleagues and clients in the town, with that continued sense of urgency, we are taking the input we received, and we'll have a revised bylaw for your view in early 2023. If time permits, we'd like to present the revised bylaw your January fourth, 2023 meeting. At this time, the petitioner is planning on bringing forth the revised bylaw at your spring town meeting. In the end, we believe a revised ADU bylaw will restore property owner rights, increase housing availability and affordability, and respect the community character of Yarmouth. We thank you for your comments throughout this process and look forward to your consideration of amendments to the ADU bylaw. Essentially, you know, one is there are substantive changes that we've heard from you that we want to make as well, right? And we're going to, rather than model it on the Cape Cod Commission bylaw, we're going to model it on the Barnstable bylaw, as a neighbor of yours who thinks that. So we're going to do that, which is really only one change, although we're going to make a lot of technical changes as well, which is not renting out more than one at a time. You know, we continue to hear a lot of discussion around by right. I think that we're going to also change our approach. One of the, one of the things else that I think maybe planning board member Vincent or someone else brought to our attention, we are going to probably do a strike and replace of your existing one as well. Because, you know, it's easier to modify your existing one than try to change, than try to add a third layer of your accessory dwelling bylaw as well. So we're going to look at that and basically make accessory dwellings that allow use in the residential zoning districts, and go that route to try to avoid some of the confusion that we've heard. And so that's kind of what we're hearing, but we're going to continue that conversation. We held that public town hall meeting last night, had a really good conversation with folks. Having those good conversations continue, we're going to continue those. We plan to be back here, you know, if the chair will allow us on January fourth to present those changes to you, to do what you asked us to do, which is involve you from the start.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. I'd like to now open it to any comments from the, from the public, or any questions? Okay, yes.
I'm Christine Greeley from West Yarmouth. I am very, very happy to hear this. I was extremely disappointed that a petitioned article was going to be brought at the end of a very long warrant for a November town meeting. I really feel that it needed far more study. I took a look at some of the other things that other communities have done, including Dennis, with quite an involved process. I think that all of this town, the planning boards, all of the people working here in town hall have all been very concerned about indeed, how do we address the housing concerns in this community? But the idea of a blanket ADU without a lot of consideration, a lot of research, and a lot of planning that really needed to get done, needed to be done. And I'm really very, very pleased to hear that this is withdrawn, because I have to tell you, there were a whole group of people, and I'm afraid, you know, the, lots of support was not necessarily true, from what I've heard in the community, who were going to be very much in opposition at the town meeting and were planning to come, very specifically to come and vote no or to seek indefinite postponement on the article. So I think this is a very good movement forward that will actually, in the long run, really benefit the town and our housing needs by far more consideration and far more participation in what really should be done to our existing laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greeley. Any other members of the public? Yeah, Mr. Neets.
Yes, thank you, Richard Neets. I had a question as to whether the planning board was going to take over the idea of this concept or just wait for another petitioned article? Because I think it's much more important that the planning board get involved and study this and come up with the article as the planning authority than having, just sitting around waiting for another petitioned article.
You must have read my notes from the meeting.
I'm glad, thank you, Mrs. Collier.
My preparation notes for the meeting, Mr. Neets. I live right behind you. Any other comments from the, from the public?
There are no-
There are no online? I'd like to open it to comments or questions from members of the board.
I have written comments.
Oh, Kathy, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, written comments. I did that the last time, too.
It's okay.
Just get right over that piece. Sorry about that.
A comment from Sharon Bryan. We are opposed to any changes until there is a thorough public review of the proposal, and the public gets an opportunity to comment. And that's from Thomas and Sharon Bryan. I did have a comment from Peter Slovak. He noted that Yarmouth is only twenty-eight square miles, has the third highest population on the Cape, and we have the third most housing units. Barnstable with seventy-six square miles, and Falmouth with fifty-four are first and second. Barnstable and Falmouth have sewers, we do not. We have a wastewater problem, we have a drinking water problem. Our housing density is already causing us problems. And when you add in the motel rooms, we can't water our lawns in the summer. The ADUs have good intention, however, their unintended consequences in the long run that won't be reversible. He further commented that we are at capacity as a town in terms of what our resources can handle and what our town services can support. And he also expressed concerns about the impacts to the neighborhoods and making them less desirable town to live in. We did get an email from Mark Grills, the building commissioner. He had received an inquiry with regard to workload and ability to enforce things. Mark, as pragmatic as usual, I don't have any opinions regarding the ADU bylaw. There are sections of the law that would become problematic regarding enforcement. Short-term rental limitations are necessary, however, tracking these could be difficult as there could be lots of ADUs. The same holds true for the number of bedrooms. We recently read a contract for construction work on a property that specifically read that the contractor would create another bedroom after the final inspections are completed by the town. Obviously forgot to remove that last page. The parking areas for ADUs being off-street could be a problem for enforcement. Whether the ADU is used for boarding or lodging or other commercial uses will have to be monitored in some way, almost unenforceable. We must address complaints that come to us, valid or not. We have to confirm if a violation exists and then follow up. So that's where the work is. Just when they get in a complaint, they can't assume it's true. They have to go out and investigate, and then there's lots of follow-up that goes along with any of that. And he noted that we currently receive over a hundred complaints a year. As density increases, the potential for complaints increases. This appears to be an amendment to the current bylaw through the accessory apartments section of the zoning bylaw. The current bylaw addresses affordable accessory apartments. I have heard the words "crisis" numerous times to address affordable housing. This new bylaw does not appear to have affordable apartments mentioned. He noted that we currently have fifty-two accessory dwelling units that have been created via the special permit from the zoning board of appeals, and they maintain a running list of that, and they do the inspections every two years. What happens is some come on, some go off, because they no longer need it for the family-related. And in the ten years that he's been here, I've only had two inquiries to create a rental ADU as it is being proposed. I would suspect that our workload would increase, as well as complaints. There was also a letter received from attorney David Reed. He had commented previously, and he wanted to follow up with some additional comments. He has looked at similar bylaws in some other neighboring towns. In Dennis, their bylaw, which passed at their special town meeting, would require a special permit for ADUs, requires the owner on the premises to occupy one of the units, limits ADUs to lots of, at least fifteen thousand square feet, expressly prohibits subletting or short-term rentals, and limits it currently to nine per year. Chatham's existing ADU bylaw permits them by right on a conforming lot. It requires a special permit on a non-conforming lot. It also limits the number of ADUs to ten per year, expressly prohibits the ZBA from granting dimensional or other variances for ADUs. It requires the owner to occupy the house or unit and requires a twelve-month lease for the ADU. A lot of things we've been talking about. Brewster's bylaw requires the owner to occupy the house or the ADU, and they are allowed by right only on lots of at least thirty thousand square feet, but needing special permit for smaller lots. He continues to feel that these are appropriate limitations on this type of use. Single-family residential use is the highest and most protected use in town. To add this new category of use in residential neighborhoods necessitates that the bylaw contain appropriate protections for the existing residents, the primary use for which the districts were designed. The requirement of owner occupancy has been a common requirement for such units and units for good reason. Absentee landlords or two rental units on a single lot do not offer the same vested interest in a neighborhood as can be expected from most owners. The bylaw petition for consideration contains no minimum size limit on the host property, does not require owner occupancy, and requires no oversight for approval of the use on a particular location. In my opinion, this is too great departure from the protections of the existing bylaw now in place. I suggest that we would be far more appropriate for the board to conduct its own review of the existing bylaws to explore options to make ADUs more practical and accessible to property owners without removing all the protections and limitations that are in place. I think one of the main things that the planning board does is balance, balance, balance. We're trying to balance a wide variety of interests. And then the last, the last email was from Susan Solkowski, and she just expressed concerns about kind of how the meeting, the last meeting, public meeting, was conducted, and some concerns about not feeling as though they could always state all of their concerns at the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. So let's go to planning board members who would like to start. Any questions or comments for Mr. Castle?
Oh, just one comment, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Goodwin.
Brad Goodwin. The calendar is tighter than I think Chris Greeley and the other members realize. The window to vet this is, has been given us some leeway by obviously taking off the docket for November. But I'm sure, as the town planner can share with the audience and those at home, there's not much time between January fourth and when the warrant closes, and we have to have everything tidied up and all ready to go. Could you expound on that?
Sure, let me, let me just jump in on that. Kathy and I have had discussions, you know, this is all kind of late-breaking news today for all of us. And given the level of interest in this petition, and this goes to Mr. Neets's question as well, the expressed interest of several members of the planning board, and the time already invested in this, in these early discussions, I have asked Kathy to place on our agenda for our next meeting to begin discussions on the next steps for us to move forward with discussions on ADUs. So I would like the board to consider that, that we get as much information as we possibly can from Mr. Castle and his, his group on suggestions that they are willing to take into consideration. And at that time, at our next meeting, we can begin to work together and continue discussion of possible changes going forward. All of these things come through the public hearing, the second night of which we're here right now, your HPCC town meeting last night, as well as the meeting with the Board of Selectmen two weeks ago. I think it would be most helpful for us to have something more in writing from the petitioners that the, that the planning board could work with that isn't simply a model bylaw. I would, I would suggest that, not unlike our success with seasonal housing, and I would call that a preliminary success, because it did work this summer, we collaborated with the business community and the members of the, of the public to create an amendment that was satisfactory to most everyone. And I think the planning board, given the expressed interest of some members of the board and the public, that it is important for us to get on with this now and begin discussions at our next meeting. And so therefore, I've asked Kathy to place on our agenda for our next meeting to initiate discussions on how the planning board would like to proceed. And I would ask that we get as much information in writing from you, Mr. Castle, on changes that you would recommend, that you would be supportive of, that we've discussed already.
When is your next meeting?
November sixteenth.
Okay, I don't think we can have our draft ready by then, you know, but we will see what we can put together for that.
Well, we're going to begin discussions.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
We're going to begin.
That's all, that's all we've wanted through this process.
May I?
Yes, you may.
So I was not here at the last meeting, but I did take the time to watch the three hours while I was eating my dinner last night. And it reminded me that when I was a, when I was a boy of about six years old, my dad gave me a hot dog to eat for dinner, and I didn't want to eat it. So I stared at it for a few hours, and I went to bed hungry. When I got up the next morning, my brothers and sisters were eating pancakes, and my dad presented me with a hot dog from the night before. I didn't want to eat it. So I went hungry for the rest of the day until lunchtime, when I looked down at my plate and saw a hot dog. My mom finally intervened, as moms do, and gave me a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, which I happily devoured. I'm looking forward to working with you on a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. So let's get this done, let's work together, and I think we can make an ADU bylaw that's going to work for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So Susan?
I was just gonna, I was gonna, I wanted to follow up on the suggestion that Mr. Neets made. I think the initial step is who's going to do the initial drafting. I think it's very important that the initial draft start with the, start with the public forum, which is the planning board. We have a bylaw on the books, so we- We have a bylaw on the books, so and some of us have some drafting and legislative background. We could certainly look at that and start doing a cut and bite right there. We have a lot of suggestions that they offered last week. We've had several suggestions, and you offered several. One of them was to increase the size from 800 to 900. We have a list of suggestions. We could certainly start doing a cut and bite right there and have something even ready in two weeks, if we use our own bylaw as the basic text. It's not that long, and it's certainly a place to start. And I think it keys off on who is actually going to do, rather than this negotiation back and forth, we've got to have something that we present to the public and say, this is what we, this is the basic text. In red are the changes. Here's why we made the changes, and then we can have that kind of dialogue. I do think time, I think Brad is correct, we don't have a lot of time. We don't have six months to draft a new, nor do I think we need it. We have a bylaw. We can take it and amend it. Basic things like that, we could offer it to the public. What do you think about 800 versus 900? 10,000 square feet, upping it to 15,000. Those kinds of things, we can easily put and have something like that ready in two weeks.
Well, before we set expectations on what we can have in two weeks, or two months, or six months, because we don't know that, I would like, I don't mean to cut you off, Susan, but this is exactly the conversation I want to have at our next meeting. And so how we approach this, it's always in the best interests of a zoning document for it to be born, maybe in the public interest by the community, but carried by the planning board. I believe that we are the best carriers of zoning amendments because we're supposed to know the most about them. So again, that should be part of our discussion next week, and I think we'll come to some conclusion about that. But I do not want to at all set any expectations on what's going to be available next week or next month, or in January, or February, or even at the annual town meeting, because I think that would be unfair to staff and unfair to us to set expectations that we're not familiar with, all of the boundaries that we're dealing with here. But it's my recommendation that we put it on the agenda for next meeting, and I want to hear from other members of the board. Mr. Saban?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've spent the last couple of weeks thinking about this, and I've wrote a little statement, if you don't mind. I have served the town of Yarmouth for over 30 years on many boards and committees, from the Board of Assessors to the Board of Selectmen and a whole bunch in between. In that time, I have always attempted to be respectful and cooperative while working with my fellow board members and citizens in order to make Yarmouth a better place for all of us to live. At our last meeting, my conduct was somewhat inappropriate, and I apologize to you, Madam Chairman, my fellow board members, and those within the community that I may have offended. With that said, I must comment on the remarks made during our hearing. And quite honestly, I'm happy to hear some of the comments of my fellow board members tonight. As you know, I was extremely concerned regarding comments regarding the desire to abridge the rights of a fellow citizen, the petitioner. In the future, I would hope that we would not direct town staff to abridge the rights of a fellow citizen by voting to prevent a fellow taxpayer from the services of town staff. Let's never tell our fellow citizens trying to make a difference that ships have sailed. And let's never tell our fellow citizens that Town Hall has a front door and a side door. The doors to Town Hall should always be open to the citizens of Yarmouth, even, and maybe even especially if they bring a petition article. There are few ways to get a bylaw in front of town meeting. One is through town committee, and the other is by a petition article. Now, why do we have petition articles? The right to petition the government is provided in the First Amendment of the United States. The founders considered it so important, they included it in the very first amendment. In general sense, the petition is a verb that means to request, or a noun that means to formally request. In legal sense, the United States petition is the right guaranteed by the last 10 words of the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. Congress shall make no laws respecting the unestablishment of religion or prohibit the exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of people to peaceably assemble, and to petition the government, in this case, the town of Yarmouth, for the redress of grievances. In 2019, the planning board brought to town meeting an affordable/family-related unit bylaw, not an accessory unit bylaw. The 2019 bylaw failed partly due to restrictions that was in place, and who you could rent to, and for how much. Some suggest that now that we need more time to review. I will note that in the planning board's presentation in 2019, they stated, and I quote from town meeting, "The planning board spent several months reviewing a wide variety of information." In my opinion, not much has changed, except a greater need to address this crisis. This has been reviewed, and we all know we need to do something. Doing nothing is not an option. We are losing our workforce. We are losing our community. When I graduated from DUI approximately 40-plus years ago, there were 400 students who graduated. Today, there are less than 200. Families are leaving. Seniors are being forced to move closer to their families because they don't have people to look after them. Stores are open for fewer hours in less days because they don't have workforce to stay open. It's not going to be much of a town if we have businesses that are open to meet our needs. The town has done a lot to address affordable housing, but we need to find solutions for the middle. Those that don't qualify affordable housing are middle class. Who are they? The receptionist at your doctor's office, the person who serves your meals while dining, the staff here at Town Hall, your neighbors. The petition has flaws. I agree. We're all aware of that. It is my hope that the planning board now takes this opportunity to work cooperatively with petitioners from our community, not in this, but all, and that we work together to present a bylaw that we can all work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saban. Any other comments from planning board members?
I would just, thank you, Madam Chair. As I thought, first of all, I'm very happy to hear that there will be a more deliberative process and that the velocity of this concept has been slowed. But I wanted to say a quick statement, then in follow-up on Brad's question, because I'm still curious about working backwards from a certain point in time, just to kind of get that all in our heads, and I would like to come back to that in one second. But the one thing that I've been continuing to think about is, while I am very much aware of a certain neighborhood who turned out in great force two weeks ago, I would just like to repeat what I said, which is that the six of us on this board are trying to look at the entire town of Yarmouth, not one neighborhood. And that makes our job a lot harder than you might think. And so I would hope that as everybody thinks this and talks about this and goes back and forth and forth and back, we, I believe, are charged with flying higher off the ground. And that isn't anybody's fault, but we are responsible for a bylaw for the entire town, not just for a certain neighborhood or a certain village. And I would hope that we could keep that in mind as we do work collaboratively to try to find what we believe is a reasonable solution at a reasonable pace. Thank you, Madam Chair. My question just has to do with approximately which date do we have to start working backwards from in order to kind of line ourselves up for Springtown meeting? Would you like to discuss that now, or is that in two weeks?
That's next week, and again, I don't want to set expectations that Springtown meeting is something that's...
And I'm not requesting that it be.
I understand that.
Yeah, I was just asking.
Again, I don't think we have, I think what I'd like to do is be able to talk about that at our next meeting when we've had time for Kathy to look at calendars, look at her own work, and hopefully, we need information from the petitioner as to what they would like based on what they've heard, the baseline of some kind of beginning for us to have this collaborative effort. All we have is the model ADU, and it's been, it seems to be one that could be manipulated by both sides, since there seem to be sides here. But we need something from you, and coming January 5th...
Okay. Absolutely, we'll have some...
We're trying to get, as you go through this process, we have drafts of these things that go through five, six times drafts, but let's get started with something.
So I actually...
Beyond the petition.
I actually think a good start will be, as you heard last meeting, and I think you heard from Planning Board member Saban, that the town did do several months of work in 2018, 2019. The groups involved in Housing to Protect Cape Cod did not support that bylaw change. So maybe the best way to start this, and I'm just thinking hearing your comments, because I came tonight not knowing that you wanted to start next meeting, right? So this is new news to me. So I'm thinking on the topic right now, that perhaps we'll come with markups from that 2019 as a good starting point.
Whatever, again, whatever you'd like to bring forward as something for us, we want to engage with you, we want to collaborate with you, we need something from you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's where I'd like to start.
Can I just point out?
Yes, you may, Kathy.
In order to give the board enough time to review documents, I typically make their packets the Friday before the meeting, just so you know.
So, any other questions or comments from planning board members? So with that, and the letter that we've received from Housing to Protect Cape Cod, that it is their intent, based on discussions that they may be having with the town moderator, to postpone the citizen petition, I would like to make a, ask for a motion to not recommend Article 23 zoning petition article, accessory dwelling units as written in the special town meeting warrant.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Take a roll call. Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Saban?
I'm staying.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley, aye. I believe the vote is five to zero to one. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on citizen petition Article 23, an amendment to the zoning bylaw related to ADUs?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley, aye. Thank you all for coming. The hearing is closed. We appreciate it. The meeting is, you can write something to us, Ms. Greeley. Next on our agenda are the zoning amendments. I'll wait for Kathy.
You all set? I'm ready.
Okay, good. Ours is the 16th. Special town meeting is the 15th. November 16th.
We'll just keep on rolling, right through town meeting into the next night. Hopefully, it's a one-night town meeting, Madam Chair. Kidding, kidding.
Zoning amendments for a special town meeting. In our packets Kathy had put together the letter to the Board of Selectmen and then the motion to the town moderator. So Kathy, I guess we can now, we can issue the memo to Ken Moody, the town...
I've already issued it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Sorry. You guys voted at the last meeting that this memo has already been issued.
Yeah. I'm looking at it, thinking of this petition. So now, we need to get...
Oh, I need, yes, I'm sorry.
The same, I'm jumping backwards here a little bit in terms of paperwork. So we, the citizen petition, Article 23, we need to also include the recommendation 501, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And we have that, a copy of that draft in our package. Okay, so we're good. We're good on town meeting. Anything else?
The only thing is, I need to work up, the Board of Selectmen have a motion and explanation book. I'd like to be able to work with the chair. Obviously, the motion is to amend, to remove items one and two in their entirety, but the explanation needs to be modified a little bit to explain that, so we just work on the explanation.
We're talking about the VCOD.
Yes, we're talking about, we're back to VCOD.
Sure.
Sorry about that.
All right.
The VCOD. So we just need to work with, I'd like to have staff work with the chair on the motion and the explanation tweak.
And I'm thinking we might want to have at least one PowerPoint or so, Kathy, but we'll work that back through. Are we going to have any PowerPoint other than the language of the amendment at town meeting?
We typically don't unless it's something more significant where you would really need to explain to the public.
We don't need that on this, no.
We weren't planning on a slide.
No, good. So it'll just be the article?
Yeah.
Okay, great. That's it for town meeting, which will be the next time we get together. Right? Yeah. We don't have meeting minutes. Any committee updates? I do. RAC, we had another public outreach meeting, which I mentioned at our last meeting, actually, yes, it was right before our last meeting. The next one is November 21st at the Senior Center, where we will be, again, presenting as much public information as we can about the wastewater project and the status of contracts being issued and the various phases, so that the next one is at the Senior Center on November 21st. Today, I attended this CPC committee, and we've received 12 proposals for requests for CPA funding, and we begin those reviews next week, for the next five or six weeks, I guess. So CPC has begun the process of CPA proposals. So that's it for my meetings.
May I add some more acronyms, Madam Chair?
You may.
CBC is heading up to the zenith, to the crescendo, has been climbing the mountain to get ready for final grading. All the departments have done an amazing job. Pending, one last presentation to the CBC on the 7th, but all the grading and the work that has been shepherded incredibly efficiently by Assistant Administrator Mr. Scott, I believe by the 14th, we will now come down the other side of the mountain.
November, well, 14th of November?
Yes, sorry. Thank you for clarifying. And also, just even though it wasn't required for me to be a part of it, I have decided to step away from the library planning committee, but that is not a reflection on my intense advocacy for potentially a single library in the future, as we look at all the possibilities of the future of Yarmouth Library Services.
Okay, thank you. All right.
If I may have one more, so the design review committee, I'm not, I was on vacation last week, so I'm not sure if this was mentioned then or before, but the J-Mart?
Yeah, I think we...
Did you review that?
The last one. Yeah, we did.
So, yeah, they come before us with their revisions, and it's a fantastic-looking plan, so...
Big changes.
Yeah. Looking forward to seeing that go through.
Yeah. And that, when are we scheduled for that road?
16th.
I think, yeah, we need to clarify on that. We had originally been scheduled to have the road bylaw on the 16th, but there was some question, because I believe Susan said she couldn't be at that meeting, and this is, we need to have this further discussion, and I believe Brad thought it might be extremely difficult for him to make the meeting on the 16th, and he was definitely not going to be able to make the special town meeting. So when I notified Attorney Tardif that we might only have four members, which means it would need to be unanimous, or whether he would like to defer to another meeting, unfortunately, because we have, the 7th is already full with the HPP, the 21st, I think we were hoping not to meet Christmas week, it's a little hard to get people to come out that week, and Paul couldn't make it on the 4th, so we ended up on January 18th for the road bylaw.
Oh, okay.
I do have an inquiry into him with regard to when we will be seeing the Davenport subdivision and the special permit application, which I have received last week. So we have that definitive subdivision for the Davenport, yeah, so...
What's the clock on that, then? Once you receive it?
It's 90 days, so we would, if, obviously, the 4th would have been the perfect date, but I know that Paul can't be there, and I know the Davonports would like, I spoke with Christian, and he would like their attorney to be present, so I asked Paul how he wanted to proceed. They can always give an extension. It's not...
But in theory, it could go to the first meeting in February.
Which is February 1, correct.
And that would still fit within the 90 days.
I think it might be a little bit over. We might need to ask for an extension.
All right, I'm just, I'm asking generally. My goodness, what a full dance card, Madam Chair.
Yes. So J-Mart is, if I understood Kathy, is now January 18th. So we'll, hopefully, we can all mark that on our calendars as an important meeting. I do think that's going to be an important discussion.
I think it will be, it will be interesting. They certainly, I think, have tried to do everything they could to address comments. But it's still, you know, gas station, convenience store, drive-through with four housing units, so. But they added a whole other lot, so it's a much better layout, in my opinion. I think we need to talk about Will's schedule.
Well, I just want, well, January 18th is my wedding anniversary, Madam Chair, but, you know.
We'll get celebrated, too.
We'll have to see if I can get permission.
Bring your wife to the meeting.
Well, anyway, I guess for number 26, we've probably gone past all the other potential fun things we could do in the middle of January. But I will do my best to be here on January 18th. As far as, well, obviously, there's some new information, Kathy, so I will do my best to attend virtually on the 16th. I, we'll see where we are in two weeks.
Can I just get a confirmation of who will be here on the 16th?
November 16th.
November 16th. Yes, thank you.
I will be here?
I'll be here, expecting your call.
He's, ooh, she's calling me. I know, what for?
My intention is to be here virtually on the 16th.
And Jim?
If my intentions to still be breathing on that day, and therefore, I will be there to bless you.
So I know that Susan cannot...
Maybe remotely, most likely remotely.
Okay. And I know Susan cannot, and I don't know, Brad, whether it's...
I'm not, I'm not sure, just because it will be remotely, but I'm having a medical procedure done on the 9th, so I don't know if I'm going to be up to it. But I definitely would watch the video of the recording so I could participate afterwards if I can't make the meeting.
Okay. Well, we'll do our best. We'll do our best. Okay, thank you all. Any other Board member items? Kathy, correspondence, or any staff updates, or anything else you need to share with us?
I guess the only thing that I, with regard to correspondence, is at one of the meetings previously, there were some questions with regard to what was happening at 91 Route 28, the former Cape Cod Vacation Condos. And we sent out an email, as well as some comment letters, and also a little fact sheet on the project. My understanding is the Trust has authorized Mary Wagon and their staff to continue to do due diligence on the proposal. Nothing has been decided at this point. But I did send that information out to the Planning Board.
That is correct.
And all it was, was a sketch, right? If I read it correctly, pretty much?
Yep, very preliminary.
And I mean, Brad's on the Affordable Housing Trust. I don't know if he has any...
I'm sorry, Brad.
No, I just, I wasn't going to update because it basically got continued. And I think they're going to take an informal site plan review to sketch out, my words, not theirs, what they can do, what they can't do, and have some guidance from the town officials. But the Trust didn't take any action on granting money or withholding money.
Okay. And this may end up being a, just so you know, coming before the Planning Board as a motel bylaw. Or it could go friendly 40B and be a comprehensive permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals. So that has not been decided at this time.
Kathy, could you just, what exactly is a friendly 40B? That term was used all the time. I was going to turn to Brad and ask him to explain it, but...
Yeah.
What is a friendly 40B?
Friendly 40B is usually when it's recommended by the town. A developer would come to us with a 40B project. That means that they don't have to meet our current zoning. They have to meet all state regulations, so wetland regulations, septic regulations. They have to meet all of those for a project that would be required to have 25% of the units be affordable. So they don't necessarily have to meet all of ours. But if it's a friendly, we're kind of working together. How can we make a nice layout, a nice design, as well as, you know, make it a financially viable project and add rental, typically rental units to the market? So that's typically a friendly 40B. An unfriendly 40B is where they say, I don't care. I'm going to put five stories up and I'm going to, you know, have 50 units per acre and I'm going to go directly to the state for approvals and not go through the town. And then I come for my comprehensive. They need a paper from the state saying it's okay for them to do that. So obviously, friendly 40B is always better. And as close as they can be to our existing zoning is always better because that's kind of what our community said that they were willing to tolerate. But we do have the HMOD 1 bylaw, which does allow, through special permit, up to 20 units per acre. So that's, might end up coming to the Board.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, yes, thank you. I think everyone knows that the Yarmouth Housing Production Plan, a draft, is out for public comment through November 15th. And it's available either through contacting Mary Wagon here at Town Hall or it's available on the town website.
It is loaded with good information.
Including looking at our ADU bylaw.
If there are no other comments, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
And me, aye. Thank you all. Appreciate it.